We'll go to consent.
All items are considered routine or implement an earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested.
Do we have any items from council of items that want to be polled? Pulled?
Yes. I would like to pull item D.
Okay. D. Any, D isn't David. Anybody else in council?
Item G.
From council? They already told me about it before. So anything else from council? I have some comments, but there also has two speaker cards, and this is in regards to item G. So we will be pulling D and G. I wanted to make comments, but don't need to be pulled for items F and H. On item F, which is accepting the sidewalk repair project as complete, that's fine. I would just ask when we have it in the staff report that any change orders be detailed within the document, as we've done in the past when that was established years ago when I've asked. So I'd like to have it not just say it's two, I'd like to have it spelled out, the cost and the reason what the change order was. And then on item H, which is a resolution amending the city classification plan by adopting a revised position description for the food services coordinator. This is a position that was, became vacant, and it was reevaluated to the job duties and descriptions. A change of description as well as title has occurred, which is a netting in $22,000 in salary and cost savings to the city. So with the exceptions of D and G, is there any action?
Through the chair, I'll make a motion to approve the remainder.
No, second.
Motion made in second to approve all but D and G. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five oh voice vote. On item D. Adopt resolution authorizing city manager to execute a contract, a construction contract with Safety Network Traffic Signs, Inc., for the 218 traffic sign replacement project in the amount of $149,575, approving a construction contingency of $22,500, appropriating $22,500 for Measure A funds, and approving a total projected budget in the amount of $172,500. Marty?
Yes, thank you very much. First, I wanted to express some gratitude for staff for identifying that of our 2,700 signs plus that are out there, that 55% of them need to be replaced. Signs aren't cheap. I did receive an email this morning regarding, from a former employee that was interested in understanding, as well as I am, of why that work is being done outside of house where it used to be done in-house. We had a sign shop, we had people assigned to that to deal with the signs. So I was hoping that we can get some information from staff to kind of go over that analysis and just educate us a little bit about why we're not doing that work in-house anymore.
City manager?
Sure. I'll have our public works director, Jimmy Tan, give the overview of that specific question, which is, why is this being done by a contractor and not in-house? Before he gets up, I also just want to note that the city did conduct a retroreflexivity study which tested the amount of light reflecting off all of our signs, and that's why they are being replaced. It is strictly for safety reasons. This money will accomplish a number of the signs, but it will not go down the full priority list. And so we'll talk about that in a little bit. Jimmy?
Director Tan.
Hi. Good evening.
Ted Chapman.
Honorable mayor, members of the city council. This item was presented during the budget study session, and where we presented two different alternatives for this project. And one was to bring the item to council for an award of a contract, which we're doing tonight. And the other is to purchase the materials and make the signs in-house, and then use the city staff to replace them. And during that evaluation, staff determined that there will be another additional staff that are needed in order for us to, you know, replace all these signs. There's quite a lot of them. There's 55% of the, you know, 4,921 signs that needs to be replaced. So, and there's only eight different, there are only eight staff members in the street division, and with additional staff, the staff evaluated the needs for, and then one existing staff member would have to be dedicated to the new staff in order for signs to be placed. So just, just in terms of the work program that are existing that we have, and the impacts to that, and we decided that we thought that would be best for us to hire a contractor to replace the signs. So our street and storm division manager is here to answer any questions as well on this.
So is the sign shop in operation that we?
Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. Ted Chapman, the street storm manager. To answer your question, yes, the sign shop is still operating and building signs. We cannot undertake this project due to the quantity of signs because of the actual workload in the sign shop. For 2000, and this is just some numbers of signs that we built, 2, 14 and 15, we did 909. 15 and 16, 1,038. 16 and 17, we did 1,156. You notice this number keeps increasing, and that's due to the age of the signs, more population, and being proactive, trying to keep up with these signs. In 17, 18, we did 1290. So it's basically, we just, as our director said, is we did look at adding an additional staff member, but we would have to have that to do it in-house, to be able to complete this within a four-year program.
Understood. I think, I remember, it was Gino that was in the sign shop when we got it running a number of years ago. But I think it's important for the public to understand of what things cost, and for us to improve our safety and do it in a timely manner, that we should be looking at how we can do that. And with the staff limitations, this is determined to be the best way to move forward to get it done in a timely manner. Okay. Good.
Comments, questions? Then Marty, you want to make a motion for action on this? Marty, you want to make a motion to approve?
Yeah, I would like to approve item D for the, I'm sorry.
That's right. Is this our second?
Second.
Motion made in second to approve item D. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh voice. Now we'll move on to item G. G is adopt a resolution reducing existing red curb number of parking zones and establishing red curb no parking zones on Whitman Way, fronting 2081 Whitman Way, and near the intersection of Whitman Way and Shelter Creek. And we do have two speaker cards, and so Vicki, we'll go ahead and call you up.
The first one, and we have three now. The first one is Sylvia Flores.
And then just for the record, too, Sylvia Flores, or we also have a document here with some signatures, just for people's information.
Yes, I handed that.
Yes, we all have received it.
So you would, you know, with it?
Yep. Just wanted for the record that it has been received, and we all have received it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Mr. Medina and council members. The signed petition dated July 9, 2016, that you all have now in front of you, regarding the removal of the painted, red painted curbs on Whitman between Cortland and Cunningham Way. Finally, after patiently waiting to over two and a half years, our petition was finally addressed at the Traffic Safety and Parking Committee at City Hall on February 6 of this year, along with getting rid of the turn lane at Whitman and Shelter Creek Lane. At this meeting, it was suggested that red painted curbs would be removed 59 feet in front of 2081 Whitman apartment complex, which would allow approximately three vehicles, 82 feet further down toward Shelter Creek stop sign, which would equal about four vehicles, and 105 feet opposite side between Cunningham and Shelter Creek Lane, which would be about five, totaling maybe, giving us back maybe about 12 parking spaces. That would be good, but really not enough. But Mike Cato said that there is a possibility that more could be removed. Also, Mike Cato studied the turn lane at Whitman into Shelter Creek Lane. His studies showed that it was only busy between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning, and that it was pretty busy then. Each car using the turn lane at this time averaged about 14 seconds wait time to turn. If the turn lane was removed, his studies showed that the wait delay time would be 21.9 seconds. It would seem more important to allow more parking spaces for all the apartment residents, rather than giving the people using the turn lane a few seconds less time to wait before turning. I'm a San Bruno resident of 58 years plus, living on Rosewood, in the same house. There was never a turn lane on Whitman at Shelter Creek Lane, nor were there any curbs painted red in all these years. All of the apartment complexes, which we do have quite a few on that part of Whitman, residents parked their cars on Whitman between Cortland and Cunningham for years. Because of the turn lane, curbs that once were used for their parking spaces were painted red because they added an extra lane. Thereby, the apartment residents were left to park their vehicles on Cortland, Rosewood, and Glenbrook Lane. Having said that, getting rid of the-
Ms. Flores, Ms. Flores, excuse me. You've exceeded your time. Can you start to wind up your comments, please, for us?
Yes, I am.
Thank you so much.
Please bear with me. I would appreciate if you'd let me finish. I'm almost there.
If you, please wind it up.
We've been waiting almost three years.
It would be very much appreciated, just so we're consistent. Thank you.
So, having said that, getting rid of the turn lane would eliminate most of the red curbing on Whitman from Cortland to Cunningham, thus giving the apartment residents all of their parking spaces back. I asked Mike Cato why that turn lane was ever put in. Big mistake, and he couldn't find any city records regarding this. This excessive parking in front of our houses no longer allows ambulances, fire trucks, visiting family and friends, gardener's trucks, handicap persons assistance, home improvement contractors' trucks, UPS, FedEx deliveries, access to our home frontage parking, let alone difficulty backing out of our driveways. And I would like to ask the council to address Mike Cato regarding this issue.
Thank you, Ms. Flores.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Okay, next speaker. Next speaker, please.
Speaker, it looks like it may be two people. It's Nora and Hector, or is that fellow's name? Okay, it is. Okay.
Did you both wish to speak? Which is fine.
We'll do it fast.
Okay. Well, you're saying it's two for one. You got it. Okay.
My name's Nora Johnson. I live at 21 Rosewood Drive. As you know, they started paint, they painted a lot of the curbs red on our block, in front of someone's house, and all the way down the block, which, I don't know, on Rosewood Street, which leaves everybody else to park in front of our house. I have family that comes to visit, they can't even park. My husband can't park in front of our house. And what gets to me is I don't know why they were painted red, when she's been there 58, she's been there 50 years, I've been there 25 years. They were never red before. We had our own parking spaces. Someone said because it was dangerous. Our street is wide enough for two cars to go through. They've never seen an accident on our block. Other streets in San Bruno, as you know, going down Jettivan, the streets are so narrow that only one car could fit. Super dangerous. You're driving like up a hill, someone else could be coming. No painted red curbs. People can still park there. So anyway, that's what, oh, and it causes a lot of problems. They slashed our tires because we parked in the middle of our own parking. One guy was really upset with me because I asked him if he could move back. My daughter was coming with an infant, very upset. Andy Seordy, I think you know, he almost got into a fistfight with someone. He said, please don't park in front of my house. My kids are coming with their kids. Same thing, they were almost in getting into a fistfight. It's causing a lot of problems, and I can't even see a reason why they painted them to begin with. I could see on the curbs, on the ends there, on Rosewood and, what's that street where she lives? No, the one above. People were parking like right on the curb, like right where, you know, the turns. That's dangerous. They should have got a ticket, right? Not paint the whole street red. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. The same thing. We never had a problem all these years. Apparently, the apartment buildings are a problem. Those residents, I don't know how many cars they own, but they're always parking, I mean, they take all the parking, you know.
Does their parking's red?
It just caused, it's to the point that it's, you know, it's getting violent. I mean, they, you know, they feel that they have the right to park in front of our house more than we do. And like she says, they get mad, they slash, you know, key your car, slice tires. I mean, it's just ridiculous. It used to be a nice neighborhood.
And they, and they would park by their house, but-
Thank you.
Thank you both. Vicki, are there any other speaker cards?
Yes, there is one more. Paul Furman.
Mr. Furman?
Good evening, everyone, council members, Mr. Mayor. So limited parking for renters prompts them to park in front of our houses, which is not illegal, obviously. However, it increases the food traffic in our streets, and not always, this food traffic is not always welcome. I've observed individuals being so inconsiderate to talk loudly on their phones, revving their engines after hours, or playing music after hours. They wake up our kids. I had to confront a few of them on, a few times. So, and I don't think that's, that's a, and that is a result of us having limited parking in front of their houses, or no parking at all, and having more red lines than we should have. In addition, what I've observed, this food traffic increases loitering and also dumping. I've seen people eating fast food and then dropping, dropping the bags and glasses in front of our houses. So my concern is that these red, red lines are adding more work for us to clean our lawns and to, and to confront people when they wake up our kids in the middle of the night. I literally confronted people at 1:00 in the morning because they played the music so loudly that my daughter woke up. So I think that what Sylvia has proposed makes sense. That will increase the number of parking spaces for the renters closer to the apartment complexes, and reduce, and will reduce the food traffic in our street.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else here in the audience that wanted to speak on this item that was pulled? And there are no other speaker cards? Does council have any questions or comments?
Yeah, yeah, through the chair.
I'm sorry, Michael.
Yeah, I don't really have a question, but I would like staff to respond to the comments before we take action.
Of course.
Sure.
No, I'd like staff to talk first.
Ask Jamon if you could, or direct.
So I can have staff give an overview of the report and the recommendations and why, and through that, hopefully, address some of the specific concerns that were raised. So we can have either the director, Jimmy Tanner, or Michael Cato do that.
Whoever wishes. Yes, please.
A second, I'm going to find the information. Okay, so honorable mayor, members of the city council. I think probably the most important thing you want to hear in response to what Sylvia asked is probably to resolve the issue of whether we should have two lanes in each direction on Whitman Way at the intersection, because that's where the extra red curb that we're planning to leave in place, it's there so that we can have those extra lanes. So Whitman Way at that location is two lanes right at the intersection. As you get further away, it's only one lane in each direction. So staff did a study that we did present to the Traffic Safety and Parking Committee, and Sylvia gave you some information. It's about the total intersection delay, and the numbers that she gave you are correct. They were 14.1 seconds. If we leave it the way it is, it goes up to 21.9 seconds. That's an average for all the vehicles that go through the intersection. The level of service that goes with that, with the existing conditions, right now, the intersection operates at a level of service B. The change would cause it to go down to a level of service C. I think it's also important to understand that the changes at the intersection will be a little bit, that it's a little more nuanced than that. While the overall numbers, say 14 seconds delay, increasing to 21 seconds of delay, there is one direction in particular that is actually going to bear the brunt of the change. The eastbound and the southbound direction see very little change to their overall operation. It would be the westbound direction that would actually currently has a, it currently has a 12.3 second delay per vehicle. It would go up to 26.8, so it's going to more than double the amount of time that those cars would spend at the intersection. The level of service for that particular approach would go from a level of service B down to a D. So with that in mind, staff decided that, you know, we wanted to find a solution that would be sort of a balanced one, that would help to provide some additional parking for the neighborhood, while also not creating too much of an impact to the traffic at the intersection. And that's why we selected the amount of parking that we will want to remove in order to accommodate the 95th percent OQ, which means most of the time, all the cars that are stacked up at the intersection will be able to, you know, move through the intersection at the same way they're doing right now. And so that's the, that's the reason why we chose to do this the way we did. And I guess just to give you a little more information. If we were to do what Sylvia asked, which would be to remove more red curb, we could probably provide about five more spaces on the downhill part of Whitman Way. We could provide about five more spaces on the uphill side at Whitman Way. And I don't think I would recommend any more changes near the apartments at 2081 Whitman. I would probably not want to take any more red curb away from that location at all. So I think if we took more by the intersection, it's about 10, about 10 more cars that we could provide parking for. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Irene?
Thank you. So I'm, I'm sorry we don't have a map to show everyone what you're talking about, but are you saying that it would be, still be safe and still move traffic through if you took enough red curb away to add 10 more parking spaces?
So it's not so much a matter of safety. Yes, it's, the intersections always stop. So whether we allowed more parking there or not, from that perspective, it would probably not change a whole lot.
Okay.
Maybe if there's additional driver impatience from waiting extra time, they might behave badly, but that's purely conjecture. I, you know, I don't know. From operational standpoint, though, yes, it will get worse. You know, that's the, I was talking about, with the amount of time that individual cars may have to wait, you know, will go up. And in particular, that one movement will be, will be waiting about twice as long as they wait now.
Okay, so if you can, say the first part again. If you can remove a certain part and keep the right-hand turn, left-hand turn lane?
Uh-
Right, the right-hand turn lane? Am I looking at this correctly? What's the most parking you can give back without affecting the turn lane too adversely? How's that? Can you do five more?
Well, I think-
Am I putting you on the spot?
So I think, okay, so the amount of parking that we took right now leaves the operation of the intersection pretty much where it is now. If we're going to try to go beyond that, then I think it becomes almost like a policy decision as to how, what level of service do we want to have? What level of operation do we want to have at the intersection? So it's a little hard for me to answer that question unless I know, you know, what would be the acceptable level of operation at the intersection.
Okay, so on the map we have, it's attachment three. The top part shows existing conditions. The bottom part shows if you take 59 feet of, to remove the red curb, and then you have 20 feet, 21 feet, 35 feet, 20 feet, 13 feet.
Okay, yes.
What, what is that? Is that?
Yes, so the-
Those are driveways?
Yes, the 20, the, those symbols that you see with the 21 and the 20, those are the driveways to the apartment building. And then the 20, that's to the left of that, the 35 in between, and the 13 to the right, that's some red curb, you know, that we want to leave there. And the main reason we're leaving that there is, so again, I had, I was unable to find any information that really explicitly told me why all of this red curb was there to begin with. But, you know, I sort of surmised it's there because of the driveways to the apartment building. It is fairly common practice when you have high-volume driveways that you leave a little bit of red curb to either side to help facilitate ease of movement in and out of the driveways because they carry, you know, quite a few cars. So this, that 20 feet that we left there and in between, and the 13 on the other side was intended to sort of, again, it's a balance. We can give them back 59 feet of parking closer to the intersection. The rest I wanted to leave so that we don't cause too much of a problem with the driveways. If we start allowing people to park right up to the driveways, you know, we may have then upset the people in the apartments. And then, so, yeah, that's what that is.
Irene, can I ask a question to clarify? Because I know the direction you're headed through, going down.
Okay.
After, after Jamon.
So you indicated that there are potentially for 10 spaces, but I'm confused by that. I think she has two. So in this image, which is a perfect image that you've displayed, if you're going, if you're going east on Whitman, and you remove the left turn lane, you could probably pick up five spaces there, right? Because you get rid of all that red curb. Or maybe it's seven spaces all the way down. It's 187.
Well, so, okay, so this right here, I think is, well, yeah, so that 187 right there is from that stop line back.
Gotcha.
We're recommending that we can give back this.
Right.
This 105, I'm recommending that we leave that, because that's where the queuing of the vehicles-
Right.
-stacks up. So if we start to reduce this 105, that's where we could start to see reduction in the way the intersection operates.
Right. So should you leave, should you lose that entire left turn lane? You can open up the entire red curb.
So not, no. This 105, I think we could give back. There's a little bit in here that is, I've also recommend that we keep that because there's a bus that travels down and makes this right, left turn here. And as part of our study, we did also evaluate that turning movement. And I would think we would want to leave that. Otherwise, the bus is going to start to run over, you know, this part of this lane here in order to make the movement. And then similarly, down here, there's some red curb that I wanted to leave by this driveway for similar reasons to the other driveway. You know, we don't want to overly impact their ability to get in and out of the driveway.
Thank you. So Irene, to your comment, if you remove the left turn lane going west, going east, you can pick up your five spaces. Otherwise, the only other option is to gain more spaces by removing the right-hand turn lane if you're going west. That's your only, those are your only options.
Well, could you show the page that comes before this one? No, I'm sorry. That one. Nope, one more.
That one.
That, yeah, that one.
Yes.
Okay, I understand why you want to have- Okay, I understand why you want to have red near the driveways. But do we need thirty-five feet of red in between the two of them? And I don't mean to be picky, and I'm trying to understand this, and as you say, it was never, it never went through the process, looked like nineteen ninety-three, from when this was supposed to, okay. Parking, as you know, is getting exponentially worse everywhere. And if we can squeeze out a couple spaces here and there, it doesn't sound like much, but it adds up and it helps. So is there a reason we need thirty-five feet in between the two?
I understand, yes.
Okay.
So my sort of basic premise was to provide about a parking space to either side of the driveway. So that's on the order of twenty feet, and that's how I set this twenty feet here. I didn't touch this, that's what was there before, I just decided to leave it. So then, when you get in between here, you know, if I left twenty feet for that driveway going that way, then all we, we're left is fifteen feet, and to get the other twenty feet from that side of that driveway, you know, it overlaps, so that ends up being essentially the twenty feet for both of those driveways in between. And it was our concern that, you know, we tried to let a car park in there, they'd squeeze in, it didn't seem like we wanted to, we just didn't want to do that. Does that make sense? The twenty, it's about this twenty feet. We want twenty feet on either side of this driveway, and twenty feet on either side of that driveway.
Okay. I'm just looking to see if there was... Okay.
City manager?
Sure. So I just want to back up before we go forward, and say that these are oftentimes very difficult decisions. And this began by a request to remove red curb. Where we are now, as staff and our transportation engineers have done some analysis and recommended moving some curb, increasing parking by roughly twelve spaces. The premise of that analysis was largely based on keeping the queuing through the intersections at either an A or B, not wanting to drop those intersections down to a C or D, which we try to avoid. I would caution against traffic engineering on the fly. And if the council desires to have staff go back and further analyze the red curb to provide additional parking and bring back the impacts of what that will do, we will certainly do that. But we're essentially trying to strike a happy medium by removing some red curb to provide, I think about twelve additional parking spaces that are not there now. And there are impacts to removing additional red curb, and we might be able to provide ten extra spaces, but that has impacts. Impacts for the homeowners, impacts for drivers, impacts for environmental concerns with people queuing longer at intersections. And so we can bring back that information. The recommendation that you have before you is to respond to the community concern and provide twelve additional spaces that are not currently there.
I appreciate that, and I agree with you. It's fun to sit here and try to figure it out, but you guys are the experts, and I know you've taken all these factors into consideration, so thank you.
I definitely appreciate the effort that went into providing these additional twelve spaces. Back in the day, a lot of things happened in San Bruno where red curb was put in, and there's probably many other places where they, it can be used to improve our safety. But I think in this case, it's really clear that it's a fine balance, and getting twelve more parking spaces is definitely an improvement for the neighborhood, and proceeding forward with this recommendation is something I'm in favor of.
And just a final comment. I think staff's did a great job in actually opening up twelve more parking spaces. It's, I live very close to this area, and I drive this every day, several times a day sometimes. And I've been going up and down the street all my life. And I've always said to myself, why so much red curbing? Being married to a firefighter, there's a need for red curbing near the amount of apartment complexes. Just this morning, as I was leaving for work, the fire department in San Bruno was heading up there for a fire call at the Shelter Creek. And what ends up happening, too, is that some of these red curbing is also used for staging. So the fire trucks may all, they might get three or four here, and others are step back. So you may not think that red curbing is needed, but it is. And I think you've done a great job by balancing what you should have and what you should keep. There's some other red curb in the area, and I heard some comments by the residents on Rosewood. I don't know what that's about, but I would recommend that if they had not already addressed it, has that already, has that not been addressed with traffic and safety for the Rosewood neighborhood?
Yes, we've been over it, I think, twice at the TSPC. And I'm actually still working on finding a way to help remove some of the red curb that was put there.
Great.
But it's going to take a little bit of extra work. We're trying to revise a policy that we have that will give me some flexibility to do that.
Great. So, thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments from council? Any action from council on item G?
Motion to approve the staff's recommendation.
Second. Motion made second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five-oh voice. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming down. Thank you for staying and letting us, keeping us apprised of everything. Thank you very much. No, you don't have to stay. You can, you're welcome.
No, you have.